Okay, next. Item 13 is request for board rules, waivers, and statutory changes. Angie, are you taking point on this?
I am, Chair. Thank you. And I'll go ahead and just give you some background first before we move to the actual motions. Because this is just a little update that Deputy Superintendent Norman and I will be giving about the requests for waivers that we've received on the 990-hour requirements, as well as some information I just wanted to provide you related to input that staff have received or individual kind of initial requests related to the 180-day requirements for your information. And then we'll put up the draft motion that is up on civic clerk. So just as a reminder, last, on July 23rd, the board, and I should probably just realize I don't have my video on, and I will try to, there it is. I will add my video. So thank you, sorry about that distraction. So just as a reminder, on July 23rd, the board approved R-277419, Section 6, which allowed LEAs to submit a waiver request or a form that would waive them from the 990 for the 2021 school year. The rule required them to do that by August 1st along with their reopening plans. So this is just a little update. We had 17 school districts and 85 charter schools submit waiver forms as of today. 18 of those requests were submitted after August 1st. Staff reviewed the waivers for sufficiency, and we requested additional information from LEAs. And we have received, as I stated, 18 requests after August 1st, as well as a couple of other LEAs who have not submitted but asked whether the board might be extending the deadline to sometime later than August 1st. And you can see that the next slide, Deputy Superintendent Norman is going to speak to, which is regarding what those forms included.
Oh, thank you. As we reviewed the waiver requests, there were two things that we were really looking for in looking at it. So obtain the wa, to obtain the waiver of the 990-hour requirement, there were two things. First, it needed to include blended learning strategies or flexibilities and formative assessment strategies as well. So both of those things had to be present, and then they were labeled with sufficient or insufficient. And then that's how the scoring went. We really wanted to make sure that it wasn't just something that a waiver was submitted, because part of the those conditions for learning as a board. And the quality is important at this time, because if the hours aren't there, then we need to make sure students are learning and that that learning is taking place.
Just wanted to check if there are any questions about the 990-hour forms and waivers. If not, I will continue to move on to the next topic, which is 180-day.
Okay, questions from board members? Board Member Davis?
Thank you. Just wondering if we have heard any, I know there was a little bit of talk about perhaps extending that deadline to August 15th for those who had not submitted waivers. Have we heard a need for that or not? Could someone speak to that?
Yes, I could. Board Member Davis, Chair, is that okay?
Please do, yes.
Yes, you'll see in the backup that today's draft waiver request from staff includes an extension of that deadline to September 1st. You, as the board, could adjust that however you would like. But yes, that is one of the proposed motions in the draft motion that we'll be reviewing in just a moment.
That would, in the civic clerk, that was under number three, if I remember right.
Yeah, thank you. I think the, just the question was, do we, have we heard there's a need for it?
Chair, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Angie?
Yes, because if you do not extend that deadline, the 18 LEAs above that submitted after August 1, as well as I've had two that did not submit yet but were waiting to see what your decision was today, there would be at least 18 LEAs who have indicated a need for it, whose requests we would not be able to grant because they did not submit by August 1st. Hopefully I answered your question.
Board Member Cannon has her hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. Angie, I would just like you to comment on the idea that we provide high-quality instruction that includes blended learning and formative assessments. I'm wondering why the inclusion of formative assessments here. Is this some, are formative assessments something that are not routinely used? Or is it just highlighting something that the districts do routinely? Or do you feel formative assessments are necessary now because of the break in school?
Okay, Patty?
So in looking at this, the two things had to be put in place together. So the formative assessments, it's really talking about formative assessment strategy. So it's not talking about just a test, but the strategies that schools really look to to make sure that learning is taking place. Some of the waivers that were submitted that were approved that had that sufficient information in them included that there was going to be a beginning-of-the-year assessment, so that they knew where students were at. Data was going to be gathered, and they were going to work in PLCs or professional learning committees to decide whether they should have all students staying together or students moving at their own pace throughout curriculum. So it was really the ability, formative assessment strategies are looking at the ability of each student where they're at, and then knowing how, if they grew, if learning took place, and then how to guide that instruction on a daily basis.
Board Member Cannon, did you have, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay. Board Member Earl, your hand is raised.
Yes, I'm just wondering about the formative assessments as well. How are those assessments? Are they verified in some way through the state? Or is it just written into the plan? How is that done?
Right now, we marked it as approved if it aligned to what their, with the mission or vision of their school was. So some of the formative assessments are different. Some of them are going to be bringing students in. Some of them are doing it online. But as long as they were able to speak to the formative assessment strategies that they're using and in alliance to the mission and vision of their school, and ensure that learning is taking place, then we did the approval on that.
Okay, I appreciate you articulating that it's the strategies and not the assessments themselves. So thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
All right, then I will continue, Chair.
Please continue.
Those slides related and gave that background related to the 990-hour requirement, an update on how many LEAs received it and how many LEAs we anticipate still are looking to file or qualify for that waiver. So the next couple of slides will speak to information that we've received as staff related to the question of what are an LEA's options if they decide to delay the school start time for the year? And as you know, we've had a number of school districts and charters who have done that, especially those on the Wasatch front. So the option one that an LEA would have is that the LEA could add, of course, days into their regular schedule throughout the year or at the end of the year. Option two, which is limited in some ways, and I'll explain how, but option two would be to ask the legislature to waive the 90-day notice requirement before LEAs reallocate up to four days for professional learning. So let me give you some background on that. Section 53F-2-102, it's in subsection 4, allows every school district charter school to reallocate up to four of their instructional days for professional learning, training, or preparation. But in order to do that, the local board has to approve that action in a board meeting in accordance with Open and Permanent Meetings Act. And they're required to do that within 90 days of the beginning of the school year. So obviously, we have missed, or LEAs who did not do that three months ago have missed the timeline in statute, the notification requirement. So one option we could do is we could ask the legislature, and you'll see this item in 13.2 in a minute, is one of the items for your consideration, would be to ask the legislature to waive that 90-day notice requirement, which would allow LEAs to do what they're already legally allowed to do, just waive the notice requirement. So that would be option two. We've had a lot of requests from districts wondering, they thought that maybe that 90-day notice requirement was in board rule. It is not. It is in statute. So that is an option that the board could support and move forward. There's two more options that involve board action that you all could do. The board could decide to waive the 180 and essentially waive the equivalent of those four days so that we wouldn't need to go to the legislature to ask for the waiver, but instead, you would be waiving the 180 under your authority under R-277419 and in lieu of requesting the waiver. And then option four would be you could waive essentially the number of days equivalent to those four days plus more. And the reason why I state that option four is because we have received word from a number of LEAs who, by delaying their start by a week, they actually need a total of five or six days, depending, waived to accommodate that without violating the 180, or they would have to, you know, include those additional days throughout the year or at the end. So for your information, as of today, most of the LEAs who've reached out to us wondering whether they should seek an individual waiver, they've indicated that they're likely looking for a five or six-day total. For some of them, they were able to implement the four days, so they might be only asking for one or two additional. Others missed the 90-day and may have only built in one or two of those days. So just wanted to give you that information. And so if you, as the board, did want to proceed with waiving 180 days, I just throw out here some, three different approaches you could use to that. We could create a process similar to what we did for the 990-hour waiver, where anyone who wants a waiver of the 180 days up to a certain amount, and you could set those guardrails, whether it's 176, 174, et cetera. They could then submit the waiver form. We could include a requirement for them to provide a description of their formative assessment practices and how they're going to identify student learning needs, similar to what we did for the 990 waiver. A section, second option would be to waive the days for the whole system at once. This is similar to what you did in the spring, where you waived the 180 days completely at once for the whole system. What you could do is you could waive, you know, again, either four days, five days, six days, but do that at once for the whole system without requiring them to submit anything to us. Or the third option, which you wouldn't have to do, you wouldn't have to do anything today, but just know that this option is also available for LEAs, is that LEAs could submit individual requests to the board pursuant to board rule R-277121. You'll be familiar with that process, because it's what our schools, who currently work under a four-day week, do, where they come, they present to the law and licensing committee, present data, et cetera. And we could either go through the regular process or do some sort of an expedited process, but have LEAs apply to us individually. So hopefully, that background is helpful. I've received a number of questions, again, from LEAs and a couple of board members, wondering what LEAs might have to do if they do delay the start of the school year, as we know some have. And I'd be happy to answer any questions there.
Okay. Questions from board members on this? Not seeing any hands up. Apparently, you've answered all their questions.
Great. Then if you don't mind, Chair, I'll now move to the second document underneath that item, which is a copy of the draft motion that staff have prepared for your consideration. And so the three items that we have to present to you today that staff have requested is, one would be to waive the testing and reporting deadlines for the keep assessment for this year and allow the superintendent to determine the testing and reporting deadlines for this year. And that is because we have so many schools starting at different times, and it will allow the superintendent, which will be Assistant Superintendent Darren Nielsen and his staff, to work with LEAs to establish those appropriate deadlines for this very unique year. The second item is waiving the requirement in Section R-277406 for each school to conduct one fire drill within the first 10 days of the beginning of the regular school year. In a moment, you'll see that this, we will also, in addition to waiving the rule, we will need, or the system will need, an exemption from statute. But we didn't want the board rule to be a barrier. If the statute is amended or waived, we want our board rule to also be ready to be waived in the case that the legislature waives that requirement for the first drill within the 10 days. And I can speak more to the why behind that recommendation. Third is, would relate to the item we, I just spoke to, that Deputy Superintendent Norman and I spoke to, which is for an LEA seeking to obtain a waiver from the 990-hour requirements, extending the August 1st deadline in R-277419 to September 1, 2020, or any other date you would choose, to allow LEAs and their governing boards more time to determine whether they need that 990-hour waiver for the 2020-21 school year.
Okay. Thank you, Angie. Questions from board members? Board Member Davis?
I have a fourth motion to add after we're done with questions on the first three. I just want to get that on the table whenever you're ready.
Okay, questions on, questions or comments on the first three? Board Member Hanson?
Thanks, I'm back. Question on number two with regard to the fire drill. Are we, it looks like we're just waiving that requirement. So how many fire drills would need to be conducted? When would the first one be done if we're waiving that initial one? And what, what about the option of just delaying that instead of waiving it? I do think fire drills are going to be tricky in this environment with social distancing and all of that, and we probably need to practice.
Okay.
Chair, would you allow me to speak? Yes, currently, elementary schools are required to do drills every month, and they alternate between evacuation drills every other drill. Secondary schools are required to do drills every other month. So I am, so an elementary would do nine drills a month, a year or so, and secondary would do four or five drills or so a year. So right now, we're only looking to waive the requirement for this one drill. I will say that some of the concern about, especially evacuation drills, which 400, as well as the statute, are very specific about that first drill being an evacuation drill, especially so close to the beginning of the year, is a question of how students might congregate and whether the LEAs are ready to, have had enough time to determine how to get kids not to congregate once they are evacuating the building. But I agree with you, Board Member Hanson, and I, as the School Safety Center, they've been reviewing this question. And as staff, we've been kind of looking to some more permanent changes to board rule on this topic that would allow the evacuation drill to maybe include talking or speaking through it or training while you remain in the classroom and not necessarily stimulating or evacuating the building. And we're hoping that those changes could also support our online schools or the schools that have online programs so that they could continue to do trainings for students that aren't in the school at that time. So that is a discussion, and staff is looking at developing some more permanent, but yet applicable to COVID-19, strategies so that our LEAs can still do the drills, but not necessarily require them to evacuate the building. The statute's broad right now on what a drill, the meaning of drill is. And so we would look to bringing that to the board to help define and kind of have a plan about what drills look like this year in, due to COVID-19.
Thank you, Deputy Stallings. I appreciate that. Is that okay, Chair, if I just follow up?
Yes, follow up.
So if I'm to understand, then we, we would have a fire drill or an evacuation drill in no later than two months from the start of school for both elementary and secondary schools. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And unless we change it somehow, correct?
Yeah. Under what's here, though, that would be the plan, and we'd need to address it before that timing.
Yeah. Okay, Board Member Lear?
Yes, thank you. I'm looking at, I'm trying to look at these waivers and this waiver situation holistically. I think we're gonna, I feel personally like we're, we could be, as a board, packed to death by chickens over these waivers. And so I'm trying to look at this in a broader context. And my, my inclination is to be very liberal about grants, about granting waivers generally. But my one, my one prerequisite would be that the LEA requesting the waiver has an acceptable plan in place and is following the rules, the very minimal standards the board has laid down for these plans. And then I'm inclined to grant almost any waiver that, that LEA seek as a whole or individually. But I'm not feeling very good about it if they have not submitted their plans. And we haven't yet heard how many submitted plans and how many are acceptable or, you know, minimally acceptable. So that's more of a general statement, but it's also to say, I don't, I don't really have a problem with any of these, but I, I feel like there's a parallel discussion with, as the LEA submitted a plan and it's acceptable and meets minimum requirements, and then, sure, any other waivers seem reasonable for a year.
I'm looking for other hands from board members, questions regarding the proposed draft motion that has items 1, 2, and 3? Board Member Bell now?
So Chair, I don't, I don't know if this is what Board Member Davis is going to talk about, but I would like Angie to help me to create a draft motion to add to this on the 180 days. And I actually so appreciate Carol's comment that we waive the 180 rule with, if they have the minimum requirements that we have put in for their program. So Angie, can you help me draft something? Or maybe you can work on that, and Cindy can bring hers up in the meantime. So Chair, I do want to make that motion. I just don't have it in good verbiage. I apologize.
Okay. But maybe, maybe we can go to Board Member Davis to see what she was proposing? We don't, we don't have a motion yet, but what would you?
I can, but I, I think that Angie has this language also, so she might be double tasked at the moment. So I'd like to make a motion that for licensed, non-provisional teachers only, the board waives the requirements of R-277-533 that an LEA administrator, submit, summative educator and administrator evaluation data to USBE if the LEA submits formative evaluation assessment data to USBE for 2020, 2021 school year. And I'd like to speak to the motion.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Jennifer Gravitt, second.
Okay. Board Member Davis speaking to the motion?
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of word tweaking in there. It says, waives the requirement that an LEA administrator submits a summative educator and administrator evaluation data.
Board Member Davis, it's supposed to be administer a summative evaluation, so, or maybe I should say implement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that better?
That's perfect. I think I misread it the second time. I apologize. That was my fault. I'd like to speak to the motion when you're ready, Chair.
Yes. Well, we have a motion and a second. I think the second was... Well, hang on one sec.
It was Jenny.
Yes. So the way this reads, are you good, Board Member Davis, with this motion, the way it reads? And then I'll ask for the second.
Yes.
Okay. It's, Board Member Gravitt, are you still good for the second?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Board Member Davis, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, and Angie, I apologize. It's good either way. I had misread it when I read it out loud. Just want to let folks know that in code, we are required, districts only, this is change to charters, but in code, districts are required to submit evaluation data each year for each educator. In our board rule, we require that data to be a summative evaluation. So as we've been studying this a little bit, we're finding that some districts already are doing a summative evaluation every few years, and in the middle, doing a more formative evaluation, perhaps with a piece of that summative evaluation. So what this waiver is requesting is that for this year only, and for only tenured teachers, not provisional teachers, we waive the requirement that the evaluation data sent into USBE has to be that big, full summative assessment. For this year, they can put a stopgap for tenured teachers and just do the formative assessment or whatever they're doing in lieu of that big summative. And then the following year, pick back up on the regular rotations. This wouldn't mean they have to double up on anything. They would just pick back up on regular rotations the next year. Would also give us a year, a chance to kind of figure out where our board rule language is disparate with what's happening with practitioners in a, in a evaluation for teachers. We have some areas that we need to figure out where we want to move for the path ahead. So it would, it would give us a year to do that. But the biggest thing it would do, honestly, is free up some principal time and some tenured teacher stress and weight to really focus on these provisional teachers that not only are new to the teaching profession, but now are dealing with all of these COVID issues on top of being new to the profession. So that's, that's why I'm supporting the motion. Thanks.
Hey, Board Member Lear?
A clarification from Board Member Davis. Was it your intention to add this as a number four so that this would be another waiver generally? And I get that it doesn't apply to charters, but was that the plan? It wasn't, it was just another proposed waiver to board rule, right?
Yes, correct. And if, I don't know if we're going to try to pass these all in one sitting. Maybe if someone makes a motion to pass all of these, if somebody doesn't like one of the four, they could divide out the question, but it would be fine. Me?
Well, we, we have a motion on the table, so.
I'm fine.
We're gonna hit this, we're just gonna hit this one at a time because you made the motion. So, right now.
Okay, thank you.
Let's... Well, there's a motion to add to this, but I, you have a motion in a second, right there. That's what's before the board right now, is what, on the screen, it shows as a number four, but any discussion? That's what's before the board right now is, on the screen, it shows as a number four, but any discussion? They see none. The motion before the board is that the board for licensed, non-provisional teachers only, the board waives the requirement of R277-533 that an LEA implement a summative evaluation and submit summative educator and administrator evaluation data to USBE if the LEA submits formative evaluation assessment data to USBE for the 2020, 2021 school year. That is the motion. Any further discussion to the motion? Board Member Bellknap? Board Member Lear, your hand's still up.
I mean, I still am not clear about the motion. I need to know if this is only on Board Member Davis's motion or on all four of the waiver items.
It's, I took it as one, this is just one motion as stated.
On board, just Board Member Davis's motion, is that?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
If we would add a motion on the one through three and someone wanted amended to add a four, then we'd have a different discussion, but. That's not where we're at, so we're.
Do, I do have another clarifying question then.
Okay, Board Member Lear?
Do we know of the 41 districts, if all 41 districts have submitted a plan that was required by August 1st?
Yes, all 41 districts did submit a plan. Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Hey, board members, I'm going to state the motion and we're going to vote. Motion is for licensed, non-provisional teachers only, the board waived the requirements of R277-533 that an LEA implement a summative evaluation and submit summative education and administrator evaluation data to USBE if the LEA submit formative evaluation ev- let's see, formative evaluation assessment data to USBE for the 2020, 2021 school year. That is the motion that's before the board. Not seeing any other comments, so please vote at this time. The voting is complete and the motion passes unanimously. Hey, so where we're at is Deputy Superintendent Stallings was, if you want to scroll back up, there were some proposed. The motion hasn't gone before the board yet, but proposed motion, draft motion, as you can see on your screen, and it has items one, two, and three. Does anyone have any discussion on those items or want to make a motion? Board Member Thor?
I'm prepared to make the motion if you're ready.
I am ready.
I move that in light of the national and state declarations of state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, that the State Board of Education waives the testing and reporting deadlines for LEAs to administer the kindergarten entry and exit assessments, keep, and report data to the USBE described in Rule R277489 and grants the superintendent the authority to determine the keep testing and reporting deadlines during the 2020, 21 school year. Waives, number two, waives the requirement in Section R2774006 for each school to conduct one fire drill within the first 10 days of the beginning of the regular school year for the 2020, 21 school year. And number three, for an LEA seeking to obtain a waiver from the 990-hour requirement of Rule R277419 for the 2020, 21 school year, extends the August 1 deadline in Section R2774196 to September 1, 2020, to allow LEAs and their governing boards more time to determine whether the LEA's instructional model for the 2020, 21 school year will require a waiver.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Board Member Noel?
Hey, thank you, Board Member Noel. Discussion to the motion, Board Member Bellknap?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, please.
Okay.
Angie, will you pull that up to put a number five? I guess it will be now.
You can call it the new four.
Okay, the new four. I'd like new.
Hey, what is your motion?
That it waives, that we waive up to six days total of the 180-day requirements in 277419 for the 2021 school year. If the LEA, and I'm not sure I like all of this, if the LEA includes an effective, if they have an effective 2021 school year delivery plan. The six days described above include the four days that are already allocated to them and may not be in addition to the four days. So really, it's a two-day. So Angie, did you get those pieces out?
Can I just clarify, you want to, sorry, Board Member Bellknap, I made some, took a little liberties here that we're assuming a certain process, but this would be just to grant this statewide and not have a form like we did with the 990, correct? You're.
Yes.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. I apologize. I had this other language ready in case somebody wanted a form process, so.
But I do want it to be that it, that they do have, like Carol Lear was talking about, that they do have a plan that is, that follows our recommendations and, that's, I don't know how to say that.
So would you want it to just be that they submitted a reopening plan? Or, so in this language here, I'll put it back really quickly. Oh, now I just took too much out or put too much back in. This was the language that we asked LEAs to provide us for the 990. The description of the LEA's formative assessment practices and actually the blended learning model, so.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay. It can stay.
Hey.
So, and I apologize because I've kind of drafted this on my own and I haven't received feedback from staff, other staff on this. People, please, I can put this in our Google Doc if you want to work on it or tweak it a bit. But the idea would be to use, essentially request them to send a form that shows the same, the same description of their blended learning model. And although in this case, the blended learning model may not be, you may have a district that's 100% in person and not blended, so maybe this doesn't work for this. I apologize, Board Member Bellknap. Would you like to include, have them have a description of their formative assessment practices, or we could keep it out?
No, I don't think we need it. So Chair, I'm sorry we're worth smithing here.
What's your motion and it's our day, right?
Where's up to six?
If they submitted a reopening plan?
And Carol may want us to say reopening plan that follows the, our requirements or follows the board's template with the requirements.
Meet state minimums, maybe meet.
Thank you, Carol.
Meet state minimum requirements.
And then I think that would be great. We already allow, they're already allowed four days by statute and this would get, I'm sorry, Chair, we don't have a second.
I know. I'm trying to get your motion first.
Yep.
Way it's supposed to read, and then I'll recognize it and then ask for a second, but.
Okay.
Sorry, I am now posting in Google Doc for help from my friends to word this as quickly as possible or rework it.
We get by with some help from our friends.
It's, I know it's requirements and recommendations.
I just say minimum requirements.
So, well, she's doing this. Is there any other board members that are gonna want to have staff draft some additional rules to this particular topic? And do it on, while we're in a board meeting and is there more that we're going to be seeing here on there? If not, we can get some staff to be working with, yeah.
I, in my point, I'm still going to come back to the original point, Chair Huntsman, that, and I need clarification on the three first ones, that my preference is to have all of, to have all of these waivers for all LEAs that submit their plans as required and their plans meet the minimum requirements. So I don't know if that requires an amendment because we've added it in now to this one, but not to one through four, or one through three and plus the new four, or the new five or something.
Yeah.
So do you see my point?
I see your point, but.
Can I just make comment? I apologize. So I'm typing and you're all pausing. I just wanted to clarify to Jennifer, who's helping me out, that many LEAs have not been able to take advantage of the four days because they, we would have to get a waiver from the legislature for those four. So the idea would be to clarify that all LEAs get six total and whether some of them took advantage of the four days or not. If we say waives an additional two days, we would still be required to go to the legislature to waive the 90-day notice requirement. So that is my intent of mentioning the total six days. And maybe I say. Is that better? Friends, help a friend.
Well, there's a maker of the motion. Is this what it's supposed to say or is this what you want it to say?
I'm rereading. Yes.
Hey. Is there a second?
I'll second. Chair or Board Lear, or Board Member, who am I?
Hey, you're Board Member Lear.
Thank you for the reminder. I also have another comment, though.
Okay. Did you want to speak to your amendment?
I wanted to speak to my out of order.
Well, let me get, let me see if the maker.
Oh.
Board Member Bellknap, do you want to speak to your amendment?
I did, I just wanted to remind everyone, they already have four days and we're just actually giving them two to work with. And one of the reasons I'm doing this, I talked to a superintendent and they are starting late, but really for a myriad of reasons, but number one was for safety. They do not have enough PPE ready right now. And I think even that as just the one reason is a good enough reason that we should waive this right off the bat. Couldn't we have, Member Bellknap, read out loud the amendment now, please?
Yes.
Oh, come on, Ms. Lorraine. Okay. I make a motion that the board consider waiving up to six days total of the 180-day requirement in R277419 for the 2020, 21 school year. If the LEA waives up to six days total of the 180-day requirement in R277419, okay. If the LEA's reopening, there it is, if the LEA's reopening plan meets the board's requirements and recommendations for K-12, which includes a four-day allowed in subsection 53F-2-102, subsection four, subsection B. And she has taken out now words again.
So I'm sorry, Board Member Bellknap, I just wanted to reorganize it a little bit because after I read it, it sounded like the reopening plan includes the four days. So now, I apologize, it's waives the six days total, which includes the four days allowed in blah, blah, you know, that section if. And so I think that reads better now. So if you could restate it one more.
Ms. Lorraine, here we go again. Number four, waives up to the six days total of the 180-day requirement in R277419 for the 2020, 21 school year, which includes the four days allowed in subsection 53F-2-102, subsection four, subsection B, if the LEA's reopening plan meets the board's minimum requirements and recommendations for K-12 schools.
Okay, and is the second still good? Board Member Lear?
Yes, yes. I just would like to add that phrase about the LEA meeting the board's minimum requirements to apply to all of the waivers. And that's, so I do support this. I'm second to the amendment, but I'd also like to, I don't know if it's another than, another additional change to, an amendment to the motion. So tell me.
If you, right now we have an amendment to the motion, and so we have room to add another amendment.
Okay, then I would like to both second this motion amendment and add another amendment that says, and I'm trying to figure out where to put this, that in light of the national, looking to the very beginning, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, that the Board of Education, State Board of Education waives the following for all LEAs that have submitted reopening plans consistent with the board's minimum requirements and recommendations for K-12 schools. And I think I would say for all LEAs.
So I, this is, this is your chair. I'm trying to follow Robert's rules and follow all of this. So I'm going to need some staff to help me in changing the fonts or whatever because we are crafting by amendment to amendment to amendment. I'm not sure where this is going to end or begin. Well, I know where it began, but I'm not sure where it's going to end.
Chair?
Yes.
Without objection, I don't know if Board Member Davis, without objection for the amendment that's on the table right now, I would be fine if we moved that line out of the subsection four and put it as an overarching heading over all of them.
Because I'm about, I'm thinking I ought to add something about if they don't, only if they don't have PPE and they can prove it. I'm just not sure where all this is going. I'm trying to, trying to stay ahead of it.
And if I can speak to that amendment, Chair?
Yes, you can.
At some point.
Yes, well, you've been speaking, so continue.
So I've been told. I, I think the board has very little leverage. I think it, the board has very little leverage in terms of, um, helping LEAs do the right thing, which I have been told many times by many that they, they will do anyway. But I think one of our leverage points is to say, you must at least submit this plan. And so, conditioning these waiver requests on submission of that minimal plan, I think is a very wise thing to do. So, I would like to condition, um, this list, if it grows longer, if we do it in future times, with that, that caveat that they, that the LEH requesting waivers must have submitted a minimally adequate plan.
Hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do something different here. The maker of the motion, the original motion was, uh, Member Thorpe. The way this reads, one through four. Um, does this, are you, are you good with this? I'm gonna check with you and Bellknap and Lear. And then I'm gonna call this the motion that's on the table, without objection. Oh, Board Member Thorpe, are you? Are you good with this, the way that it reads? Or you wanna stay with your original motion?
Chair?
Yes. It's Board Member, Board Member Thorpe?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I got you now. Thank you.
Chair Huntsman, can you hear me?
Yes. Now, it's a no.
With incorporating them into the motion, if that's, if that would be helpful.
Yeah. I don't think, I didn't get, I didn't get that, but can you restate it?
I am, I am okay with incorporating the proposed amendments into the original motion.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Bellknap, are you okay with all of the proposed amendments?
Uh, yes, I just only have one question, and, and Dr. Dixon brought it up. It meets the board's minimum requirements and recommendations. I guess the question is, I don't know who's going to check that. And maybe that will have to be our new administrative assistant that we're gonna hire. Oh, yeah, the answer's yes.
Okay. Um, Board Member Lear, are you good with how this is?
I do, and if Dr. Dixon thinks that, I thought that's what the review of these plans, I thought that was the point of reviewing all the LEA plans. If we're told by Dr. Dixon that was not the point, then I at least want the LEA to have submitted a plan. But I thought the point of reviewing them was to say, you didn't add this requirement or this requirement, negotiate, resubmit. Um, and if she tells us something different, then I could live with, at least give us a plan and don't blow us off.
Okay. Superintendent Dixon?
I, I think Board Member Lear just addressed, addressed my question. We just wanted to make sure that this wasn't adding additional requirements or recommendations, but it is those that we required in the template that they have responded to. So, we've had, um, as of last count, I'll have to see, I think there were two charters that hadn't submitted, but they may have been submitted by now. So, everybody has, uh, submitted a plan and will report to you on that this afternoon. Thank you, Board Member Lear, for clarification.
Thank you.
So, without objection, to those that made the motions and the proposed amendments, I'm gonna call this the motion. Discussion to this motion as it's, as it's written is where we're at right now. Is it, anyone else have any further discussion? I'm seeing none, and I think, I think I can get away with this. Board Members Thorpe, you started the motion. Can I get you to read the motion one more time through? And then we're gonna vote on it. All right, you guys can hear my, old voice here, but I think you guys get tired of it. Oh, Board Member Thorpe?
Yeah. I move that it. Can you hear me? Okay. I move that in light of the national and state declarations of state, of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, that the State Board of Education provides the following, if the LEA's reopening plans, I believe that's, provides the following waivers, if the LEA's reopening plan meets the minimum requirements and recommendations for K-12 schools. Waives the test, number one, waives the, waives the testing and reporting deadlines for LEAs to administer the kindergarten entry and exit assessments, keep and report data to the USBE described in Rule R277-489, and grants the superintendent the authority to determine the keep testing and reporting deadlines during 2020-21 school year. Two, waives the requirement in section R277-4006 for each school to conduct one fire drill within the first 10 days of the beginning of the regular school year for the 2020-21 school year. Three, for an LEA seeking to obtain a waiver from the 990-hour requirements of Rule R277-419 for the 2020-21 school year extends the August 1 deadline in section R277-4196 to September 1, 2020, to allow LEAs, governing boards, more time to determine whether the LEA's instructional model for the 2020-21 school year will require a waiver. Waives up to six days total in the 180-day requirement in R277-419 for the 2020-21 school year, which includes the four days allowed in subsection 53F-2-1024D. Did we just lose audio, or am I the only one that hears nothing?
Can hear you.
I can hear you as well. This is Board Member Earl.
Hey, Board Member, Board Member Earl, is your hand raised?
Yes, my hand is raised. I just have a question. This is relevant because of our discussion today. As soon as we go changing, or if we choose to change, um, what the requirements are for our districts, does they, they're no longer able to waive these items? Or do we have to set up a new date for them to meet it? I, I guess I'm just, I'm thinking ahead, maybe, and maybe that's just later discussion. But, um, if we go changing the requirements, we now have to set a new date for submission or something of the like. So, just in regard, in regards to the dialogue that's going on on this movement, something to think about.
Okay. Well, there's definitely dates to be considered here. Any other questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please vote. Okay, the voting is complete, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, Deputy Superintendent Stallings, we had. Did, did we have anything else? I'm trying to find my agenda here again.
Not on that 13.1, Chair, but we do have 13.2. Would you like to move to that?
Okay. And this is request for statutory changes for this special session.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I will just, uh, note that based on the motion that we, you just made, number six is no longer necessary. So, uh, just keep that in mind as we go through, because, uh, because the six day is now includes this, the four days, and, and we no longer need to, um, ask for a waiver of the 90-day notice for our school districts and charter schools. So, the other items, um, just as background, we, we've been discussing that in the next couple of weeks, it is likely that the legislature will be, um, meeting for a special session. And the list that you have here are primarily lists, uh, items that have been brought to our attention by other stakeholders. And, um, so wanted to share these with you. They aren't necessarily, um, staff recommended, although I, I would say that the first couple have been, I mean, they've all been vetted by staff, or we've discussed them. So, it's, it's not that we oppose them. I just wanted to clarify that they've really been coming from others in the field. Um, the first one goes right along with the board waiver that you just provided to R277-400. And that would be to, and this is necessary, even though you waived the board rule, the requirement is also in, um, Utah Code Section 15A-5-202.5. And that would be to waive the emergency evacuation drill for fire within the first 10 calendar days. The second, um, is a request of the State Charter School Board, and they have approved this as one of their special session legislative requests and asked us to consider it as well. That would be to amend section 53G6502 to allow charter schools, um, for the next year to give enrollment preference to students who unenroll from the school to attend a distance learning program during the 2021 school year. And that would then allow them to give a preference to those students who are coming back in 21-22. The third is, um, what's been discussed is increasing, or the, um, funding that might be associated related to increasing the enrollment caps for online charter schools, which include, um, which will result in additional funding potentially being needed to support increases in the local replacement funding and district property tax contributions. And one option that legislators and others are considering is whether Federal Cares Act funds could, uh, qualify to pay for those. Just a little bit more background on this item. You are all familiar that the board has been receiving requests from two schools specifically, but this could apply to other schools. I think right now, we've only had an official request from Connections Academy and Utah Virtual. And, um, if the students, if those schools were to, um, exceed their current enrollment caps, the amount of funding that the legislature, um, appropriated during the 2020 session was based on estimates of a certain number of charter school students and a certain number of district students. The reason that's important information to know is that as the, the numbers of charter school students rise over those estimates, we may not, or the legislature may not have appropriate sufficient funding for the local replacement formula program for charter school students. In addition to the WPU, charter school students generate approximately $2,600 of additional state revenue through the local replacement formula. That local replacement funding is to offset the funding that districts generate through their property tax. And so, we've been discussing what it would take to get that funding secured. And of course, there are questions about whether or not that funding needed to be secured before the board took action to remove those caps because, um, there would be opportunities later in the year to correct those appropriations if needed. But, um, that has definitely been one of the topics has been discussed, is what impact there might be if we see a large, um, migration or larger enrollments than we anticipated in our charter schools. The fourth one is, um, a question of whether the legislature would like to provide some funding to LEAs to support increased educator sick leave and related cost to pay some substitute teachers. So, um, as many of you know, in addition to a district or charter school's regular sick leave, there is, um, a federal program that provides an additional 80 hours of sick leave for those. Um, and I, I apologize, I can't remember the acronym right now, but somebody else can correct me. I think you're all familiar with it. It's 80 hours of leave during this COVID-era time. And, um, what the funding they're looking at might be to provide funding for the cost to support substitute teachers. And that's number four. And then number five, um, which I believe we are now, what I've heard is this, this number five might actually be discussed during the interim and then addressed during the 2021 general session. But just in case it does come up during the special session, the question is whether the pupil transportation funding provisions and how that's distributed might need to be, um, changed due to COVID-19 because currently, state pupil, um, transportation funding is based on miles and minutes of transportation routes. And districts are concerned about potentially losing revenue due to fewer students or to split schedules and not having as many miles needing, uh, bringing students back and forth. And so, school districts have been advocating for a minimum amount of funding or floor, regardless of the miles and minutes provided to sustain their programs. And so, that could, that conversation could take place during the special session, or it may be postponed, during the 2021 session. And a lot of that has to do with, um, just seeing where students end up enrolling, what the schools' different plans are. And so, and again, number six, there's no need for that anymore. So, I'm happy to answer questions now, if you have any related to those items.
Questions from Board Members? Board Member Lear?
Um, I, I, I'm not so much, well, I do have a question, but then I, I really have a motion to, uh, either what you would, I don't know if this is a staff motion, this whole list, or if we can just take out one of the items to talk about separately. But I also have a question, so let's start with that. On number two, you'll scroll down. I, 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 I need a little, I think I need a little more explanation. Can you scroll down, who's ever managing the document?
Wait, which number you'd like to see? Is it number two?
Number two, yeah.
Can you see it now?
Yes, I, you know what, and I remember I figured it out, so never mind. Just tell me when you're ready to, to remove items or take a motion on that, at that score, Chair. I figured out number two, so never mind, Angie. Thank you.
I, um, I just got a couple of questions, or not real, really, there's a comment, and it's also, uh, the, in, in light of, I know there's a bunch of lobbying happening from entities and there with the legislature, if they're gonna go into a, a, a special session. It appears somewhere around the 20th that there might be, but I don't have that confirmed. So, first question is, is there a confirmed, um, legislative session date that, that we know of yet? Have we been, has it officially been notified, we've been notified?
I have not, Chair Huntsman. I've heard the date, uh, August 20th from a number, number of people, but I don't believe, um, absolutely, I, I'm sure that nothing has been made permanent or notify, noticed publicly officially. But I think that that's what they're shooting for. I don't know if other staff have additional information. It's still a guesstimate.
So, with, with that said, um, there's gonna be a number of bills and a few things they'll file started. So, um, with lobbying and different things that will happen with that money. So, I see that, I just wanna put, put you on notice that, um, we will most likely have a board meeting prior, uh, to that session to address whatever, whatever's happening. That's whether it's happened in the education space, if it's been advocated by lobbyists or, or us. And we wanna advocate for some more, so this won't, it might, I, I don't believe this is gonna be our last meeting before that special session happens. So, I don't think this is our last Hail Mary at, at, uh, what might be proposed. So, uh, after, after saying that, I've got a question, a couple of questions. The increase, to work with legislators on the increase, um, on enrollment caps, I think we need to, before we say. I think we need to, before we say yes to that, we need to know the second and third level effect of how that's going to work. And whenever we're getting into this funding, this certain way, it, there's some other dynamics to equations and enrollment and other things that, for me personally, on item number two, I don't think I'm prepared to... No, I'm sorry, not to. Item number three, to be supportive on it because I need more information. And hopefully that would come in a meeting before the session. And then when we come to item number four, I'm not sure. To provide additional funding to LEAs to support increased educator sick leave and related costs to pay for substitute teachers. Just about everything that knew that we come in, if there's more money to go to the WPU so that they could do it. Or a question for you, Angie. Are you thinking there'll be a special line item that only addresses substitutes and sick leave? Because I don't believe we've been in the sick leave business before. Can you help me understand that?
Yes, Chair, thank you, if I can clarify. So as to the sick leave, you're correct. And again, this was not something that we're asking for. I just wanted the board to be aware that this is something that people are talking about, potentially creating a program or using some of the legislature's CARES Act funding to provide to our LEAs to support the costs of special education teachers. If you would like, I think that the only two, if you wanted to take kind of action on today or say, "Staff, please go forth and work on these two things," might be just to numbers one and two. I wanted to clarify what number three was. It is not an actual motion to increase the caps. What number three is talking about is that we're aware that there's a discussion of additional funding that might be needed to support increases in the LRF or local replacement funding due to a potential increase in enrollment cap. So I didn't want that to be confused as if you were making a motion to increase those caps. So if it's helpful to the board, from staff's perspective, I think the top two, and even number one more so than number two, because I do think the state charter school board is actively working on number two. But really, the rest of them are kind of for your awareness of topics that will be discussed, with the exception of six. We could remove six at this point because we've already taken actions. Does that help? If you'd like to split or just take action on one and two, I think that would be fine.
Okay, well, we don't have any motions, but there might be some other questions for priority here. Let's go to Board Member Davis. Board Member Davis?
Sorry, I had to get out of my chat. One question that I had was, if we need to add that all of these are only for the 2021 school year? Or are they? Would some become ongoing? And then my other question was, are we sure that... Let's just go with that question for now.
So Chair, may I speak?
Yeah, Angie, yeah.
So the first two absolutely apply only to the 2021 school year. And I think even the enrollment preference that they're seeking would explicitly state that a charter school may give enrollment preference. And again, charter schools can use that enrollment preference if they want. They don't have to. Would be for, in the 21, '22 school year, it would be to give students who want to come back to their school, who had been there in 1920, then unenrolled just for this COVID-19, '20, '21 school year. So that's limited. The other one is also limited. I just added, I think the discussion, what we're talking about here is really a unique situation. Because as I mentioned before, usually by October 1 of 2019, we would have had the numbers and then estimates for increases would have been agreed to by the fiscal analyst office, the governor's office, and our office. Again, that's what they appropriate funding for during the 2020 session. They appropriated funding. What we're seeing this year is a potential where a number of our 660,000 or 680,000 students, a larger portion might have come from the districts to move over to the charter schools than we estimated, which could impact that local replacement funding line item. And that is why we're discussing that. Because if, for instance, 3,000 students, more than we thought, now enter into some of our online charter schools and leave the districts, they anticipate about an $8 million impact for those 3,000 students. Now, 3,000 students is probably on the high end. It's probably the maximum that we would ever see. And if some of those 3,000 students are coming from other charter schools or, you know, moving to our schools, then that impact would not be as high. I hope that's helpful. But I think all of these are related to 2021 only, and I can add that throughout. But that's my assumption and what I understand.
Thank you. May I ask my second question or would you prefer?
Go ahead, you can ask your second.
Okay, it's more of a question for you, actually. And I'm just wondering, you, three, four, and five, it looks like a few of these are, have funding requests included for the legislature. But you mentioned we're going to have another meeting prior to the legislative special session. If this board is contemplating asking for any additional funds for the 2020, 2021 school year, do you prefer those motions in this agenda item now? Or do you prefer we wait until that special meeting prior to the special session?
I personally think it would best service USBE and public education if, as we know, that's coming up right prior, that we have an opportunity to prioritize and get into the space of funding requests. There's no question there being talked about in the background that we need to be in a position to make a position. And I'm not seeing enough data to act. I think one thing that Deputy Superintendent Stallings is wanting is, we want to be at the table when these discussions are happening. And I don't think anyone's saying, "Don't be at the table to know what's going on." But before the board takes a position, we've got to, I think we've got to have more data to firm up our pursuit, to make a legislative ask. And that's why I'm pretty sure we need to have another meeting right before that to respond to some of these requests and to be able to respond to what bill files have been started or opened as, right before the legislature meets. That's why I think we'll, I'm really, really sure we'll have another meeting.
Thank you. Until then, to make any other motions then?
But I do think we need to get started on one and two, but it's just me. Hey, Board Member Lear, let me just check hands here. Oh, a bunch of them have come off. I still have Board Member, Board Member Bellknap and Board Member Earl. So Board Member Bellknap?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I would like to make a motion that we approve the legislative proposals for board consideration, that we approve, number one, to ask the legislature to waive the requirement in Section 53A-5-202.5 for an LEA to conduct an emergency evacuation drill, fire drill within the first 10 calendar days after the beginning of classes for the 2021 school year. And number two, amend Section 53G-6-502 to allow charter schools to give enrollment preference to students who unenroll from the school to attend a distance learning program for the 2021 school year due to COVID-19 and want to return the following year.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Cindy Davis.
Thank you, Cindy. We have a motion and second discussion to the motion. Board Member Earl?
I just had a couple of questions, but they aren't relevant to this motion, so.
Okay, well, I'll try to keep you in the queue. Hey, the motion before the board is that the board, under our legislative proposals for board consideration, waive the requirement in Section 15A-5-202.5 for an LEA to conduct an emergency evacuation drill or fire within the first 10 calendar days after the beginning of classes for the 2020, '21 school year. And number two, amend Section 53G-6-502 to allow charter school to give enrollment preferences to students who enroll from the school to attend a distant learning program for the 2020-21 school year due to COVID-19 and want to return the following year. That's the motion on the table. I'm not seeing any further discussion, so please vote.
Mark, can I just vote aye? This is Scott.
Hey, Scott Nelson, thank you for joining us. Okay, the voting is complete and the motion passes unanimously. Is there any other questions or comments on this item of 13.2?
I did have a question.
Okay. And there's your hand. All right, Board Member Earl.
Okay, and this question just has to do with the transportation. And I'm just trying to understand. So if there is a 5% decrease in students that are being transported, the concern is that the service won't be able to be sustained. In other words, because of funding, it's going to impact personnel as well as... Are there other impacts that I'm not maybe seeing?
Angie, do you want to speak to what you've heard on that number five?
Sure, and I think if my answer is not sufficient, then I think Deputy Superintendent Jones has additional information. But yes, you know, many bus drivers are funded through this funding. Could be cost of buses, et cetera. So the idea is that LEAs have already anticipated and hired people based on the number of miles they anticipate being reimbursed for. And if they're having to or not having to drive as much or transport as many students, then the funding will be reduced and that will hurt school districts in a year where they're already, you know, having a hard time with their budgets.
Is that because they anticipate putting the full amount of our additional monies out or full amount of money or something? Is that, I'm trying to understand. They just, because it will save on gas, it'll save on wear and tear and maintenance on vehicles, but it doesn't, they are concerned about employment or continued employment of bus drivers? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, I do think it's that.
It's a labor, the labor component.
But I think it's other things as well, than just the labor component. Because the other issue I've heard is that they may not have the same capacity on their buses, meaning some of the students may no longer, you know, they may go to a different program. So there's just different issues. It's not one thing. I don't know if Deputy Superintendent Jones would like to speak more to this. I know he's got, he has more background information and knowledge than I do.
Chair, Scott.
Deputy Superintendent Jones.
Yeah, so, I mean, Angie, Deputy Superintendent Stallings has covered it pretty well. I think we have to keep in mind that basically for whatever miles and minutes they log in a particular school year affects what the funding level is the next school year. So if miles and minutes decline, you know, significantly this year, it potentially affects next year's funding. So if, you know, more routes are needed next year than opposed to this year, there would be less money conceivably because, so it's not, it is labor, but it's really about the miles and minutes that could affect it. So there's ideas surrounding, you know, maybe establish some kind of a floor level for next year. You know, I mean, it's just hard to say. There's so many unknowns about, you know, how many miles and minutes we'll log this year and then what circumstances will be going into the next school year, school year '21, '22.
Okay, so you're saying project, it'd be impacted as well.
Right, well, and we also have to keep in mind too, you know, there was likely a decline in miles and minutes last year. I mean, again, you know, the soft closures occurred, you know, towards the end of the year. But I just think we're just, you know, really trying to make sure that we, you know, set ourselves up for as much flexibility as possible, not only this year, but for next year. You know, if circumstances change and then routes need to increase, that the funding is, you know, supportive of the circumstances or conditions on the ground.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Scott, where we're at, though, is we haven't seen a proposal yet on the transportation side to make those adjustments. And a lot of our buses were running the last quarter of last year, not delivering students, but delivering, and putting hours and minutes in delivering Wi-Fi and the school lunch programs. And so there's, I mean, I'm waiting to see what they, I'm looking forward to what their proposals might look like and how we navigate because of what happened last, the end of last quarter and really what's going to happen the first couple of quarters of this year. So it's on the radar, but we don't have a proposal.
And Chair, just for situational awareness for the group, the Transportation Committee is meeting next week to really, you know, dive deeper into these details and, you know, look at proposals for the legislature. Should there be a special session, you know, and, you know, to address last year, then also going forward. So the meetings are coming up. We'll have more details, you know, especially where, you know, timing-wise, you'd have a board meeting. I think, you know, these appropriation-related requests that Angie's presenting, I'm sorry, Deputy Superintendent Stallings is presenting, are important for you to, you know, look at or, you know, adopt or in line with your point, right? That there's more information and more detailed information coming. We're evolving pretty well, we're moving together pretty well, so.
Any other questions or comments on 13.2? I am not seeing any additional hands, so thank you for your work.